Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the committee meeting in order.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good evening to members of the Board of Directors, also to committee members that are in attendance. I have three items for committee this Thursday evening. First up, probably one of the most used parts of our high school, middle school. I'd easily rank it within probably the top five or three most-used spots within the building, and that's our fitness center. Our athletic director, Mr. Dalton, is here tonight to make a presentation about some proposed upgrades, improvements needed in the fitness center, and discuss ways in which possibly to finance the project. So with that, Mr. Dalton.
Okay, thank you, everybody. We'll get moving. We'll make this presentation short and sweet. Thank you for touring. That really helped. We gave our board members an opportunity to see the current and existing room. Now we're going to show you some of our ideas for advancing the room. We're going to show you how we think that there's a possibility to get this done without any new monies, monies that are already available. This idea started because our lease is up on the cardio equipment. So we thought, is there an opportunity to, at the same time that the cardio equipment leases up, redo the whole room, and then how to pay for it? So those are the steps. Mrs. Short, our Phys Ed chairman, wrote a letter. I'm just going to show you the letter really quickly. I'm not going to read it to you. In general, the letter just basically states that the room is used every period of the day and is a vital part of phys ed instruction now. And it went from something that was maybe a want to something that's a need that's well-used and probably as popular as anything we do in physical education right now. So the phys ed department strongly endorses the use of that. I'm going to send you guys the entire presentation afterwards so you can look at it on your own and in your own time. I have some testimonials from our principals, so I'm going to play those. They're video-recorded because they're not here tonight, and I thank them for doing that. First, Mr. Bonus.
Hi, I'm Mr. Bonus. I'm from the high school. Mr. Dalton asked me to speak quickly about the renovations of the fitness center. The fitness renovation of the fitness center here. I think it's a great idea for our students and for our community. Obviously, the fitness center is inspired by our athletic teams and other extraordinary activities that we have. But we also use that in a new management track during school day. Our physical education class makes use of that seven periods a day. Also, we have physical educational classes such as weight training and interpersonal fitness, which is a class that is in a smaller group setting as opposed to a serving student tier class. You can learn how to spell, personalize fitness routines for your kids who are maybe uncomfortable with them. Engaging in a large student class allows them to complete their physical education requirements. Our physical education classes are important. Students today are engaged, but some of them are maybe less engaged due to our digital lifestyle and less activity or less active lifestyle, I guess, in some ways. And the benefit of physical education curriculum is that it teaches students fundamental of the exercise and what that looks like and how to train different parts of the body and how to develop and how you should avoid injury. All those things that are going to be much later in life. You know, exercise becomes more important. Different parts of our life may be based on health condition later in life. And you don't need to draw on our experiences with some students that may even have the experience they get on how the health is, their health. As they grow to develop, which is one of the many things that schools teach, is to choose the fundamentals and allow you to build upon those things that you want to do. I think also the renovation would be a nice idea as it follows the renovations every seventh day of the high school stadium and the renovations we've done in the high school gymnasium. So it really sort of hits that third piece to make that area as competitive with any other school district around. I think we have great facilities for school or side, and I think this would add a compliment, especially if we can bring it in at a neutral number that doesn't, through some financing options, doesn't add additional cost to the taxpayer in particular for this year. But I think it's a great idea. I think our kids will use it. I think it promotes the sense of pride. There's some marketing and branding that there that are things the kids love. Kids like customization, whether it be changing the appearance of their automobile or changing the cover of their outfit. Everybody likes customization and want to make it as individualized, as personal as possible. But I think the upgrades that I've seen there really allows to really market and sort of brand our school with our new mascot in touch. So I think it's a great idea if we can make it happen at a good cost. I think it's even a better idea. Thank you.
Rachel, there's just so many things. I have Coach Perry here also. I'll bring him in in a moment. Here's Dr. Bone.
Hello, this is Dr. Bone here, middle school principal. Coach Dalton asked me to speak to the potential upgrade of the weight room facility. Here at middle school, our kids use that facility often. We've established and created the elementary and lifting workout group. We have high interest in that group, those male and female students. It would be a great service to all of our students for an upgraded housing facility. And it is heavily used by all of those of our students. I think that the proposal that Coach Dalton has presented gives us the best returns on investment for the product in the facility. I'm in full support of it, and anything I can do to make it happen, I'll do it. Thank you.
Like this workspace, if I can figure it out. Back to workspace. Coach Perry sent me some pictures, so I'm going to show you just a couple pictures that maybe illustrate the point of, you know, hope this scrolls me on. So variety of different kids all day long. Coach, all the public wasn't all there. Your national strength, he's one of 1% of the strength, the high school people that do strength and conditioning that have the certification. Would you just talk a minute about the program, maybe come up here, that you use with the kids? Maybe leave it to like a minute or two so everybody else is informed.
As Coach said, I'm Mr. Perry, middle school health and physical education teacher. I'm the head varsity football coach and a middle school basketball coach. Last spring, I was able to get nationally certified as a strength and conditioning coach. I've been working in that role since I started teaching here, but last spring I, you know, I got an official certification. Just to hit on some of the points that Mr. Bonus and Dr. Welk mentioned. Our fitness center and weight room, those terms are used interchangeably. It is used every, every single day, all day. We open it up for about an hour every morning when we have staff available for some students to come in and exercise or, you know, work on their strength training for their sports. It is used every single period of the day by our high school and some periods by our middle school students as well, and for both athletes and non-athletes. It's not just, it's not just me as a football coach that wants a new weight room. I promise you that. And, you know, like Mr. Bonus said, our phys ed staff allows students who maybe don't want to participate in a game that we're doing or activity we're doing to come into the fitness center and utilize it, whether they're just walking on a treadmill and with their headphones in or, you know, using the resistance machines or free weights. You know, students have that opportunity every single day. And I think that that's very important if that's how they want to choose to live a healthy lifestyle, that they have those options. At the end of the day, like Dr. Welk said, during Highlander Period 13, our middle school students come down and some additional high school students come in, and we do strength training, we do resistance training, and utilize the cardio equipment after school. Our students have the opportunity to stay after school and utilize it. All of our, just about all of our athletic teams utilize it after school. And then, you know, and this is currently going on right now, our community members are using it right now, and they have access to it three days a week. And it's also used all summer, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. It's opened up to our students, our athletes, that they can come in and use our fitness center. And, you know, as now a certified strength and conditioning coach and getting more, you know, gaining more knowledge about just the whole picture, I can say that we desperately need a new room, and it will be used greatly. It may be even more so than it is right now. That's what I have to say, and I hope that the board will consider the proposed renovation and we can move forward with it. Thank you.
Obviously, we have a dynamic leader there. So we understand the tough budget time also, so we're not naive to that. So when we show you the numbers there, we just did the best we could. I'd like to give you a quick tour. So this is like a 3D version of the room, what it would look like. And again, I'll send this to you if you'd like it. Should that be an overhead of the existing space? Wish I could do this in a better way, but just not that good. So our current room, we put the, we put the equipment in after we had a room. We didn't design, or we fit the equipment we had to the room. Now we've designed the equipment for the existing Now we've designed the equipment for the existing space that we have, so it'll be much more productive and much more, uh, much easier to, uh, instruct and, you know, take safer as well. Take a look at everybody. Since we've upgraded our equipment to like three core equipment, we literally had no problems for five years, but now the wear and tear and the lease is up. That's how this started, that the, the, that lease was up. Here's a good 3D look up, what the room would look like from the far side. There'd be a new floor put in. Flooring has some issues just because of the pounding it's taken over the years, um, that we would, we would address. That's a good front to back look, what it would look like. We log it up everything like we've done everywhere else in the building, kind of gives it a neat look. End of the room, existing mirrors, uh, we log it up the benches. Another good look from the back of the room forward. Um, logo that up, including the bars, even say Highlanders on them, which is pretty cool. And that's, that's kind of an overview of the entire room. So, can't seem to get back to my workspaces where I had, uh, my, let me look here. Oops, I knew that was going to happen. Why it keeps spinning? See if I can get to it. So Mrs. Charter wrote a grant proposal. Um, we were told, um, by, uh, we were told by, um, that Athletic Advantage, that it'll be accepted. It was, uh, actually, uh, physically submitted, um, yesterday before three o'clock's deadline. It was very well written. I'll save you the details for that. I think this is the proposal that, with the dollars. All right, here we go. Uh, the cost of the fitness center would be $108,000. Um, the cost of redoing the cardio alone is, I believe, would be like $40,000. Um, originally, it was thought that maybe in the capital bond that expires, it must be spent by July first, there would be the cost of the room. Coach Mc, Mr. McKee was helping that, and then the boiler went at Joe Walker, so we used some, um, other funding. So the capital, uh, bond issue has 50, uh, let Mrs. Pedili, or Haberchuk speak on this a little bit better than I am, but the capital bond has $50,000 in essence, if you guys are for that, dedicated to this room. We were providing $5,000 a year in huddle funding for the teams. We went to the booster clubs and asked them, instead of them giving us a payment for this, would they be willing to pay for hubs? They all said they would. So that's $25,000 more, uh, $5,000 a year, obviously this is the lease, that we would take out of it. In theory, we think there'll be $15,000 at the end of the year left in the athletic budget from two unpaid coaches and a little bit more in supplies and things like that. One time we would take that clawback, however you want to call it, $15,000, that would take us to $80,000. The high mark grant is $7,500. Uh, we would no longer need the Tri-State, uh, contract because the new equipment would all be, uh, under warranty for a period of time of like five years. It would take $6,000, $1,200 a year that we pay right now off the table there. We would use the remaining $3,000 that we have in the T-Mobile grant, and we would ask the alumni association for $2,000, which they verbally agreed to, uh, getting us to the $108,000 number. So, um, are you helping? Absolutely you are. Um, but I think, um, for a brand new room in essence, that the kids would be extremely excited about, that would capture everybody's interest, and that does not stop us from going and trying to sell advertising, going and trying to get a naming rights person. We, we have contacted a couple people. I think it is, after doing this for a little bit, I think it's easier to show them the room to get their name on it than it is to project it out to them. So if we have a, a high-end room and all of a sudden, Ten Mile, sorry to use Ten Mile if you're watching, uh, uh, wants to give us X amount of money, then it could become the Ten Mile based on the, uh, uh, contracting or, uh, sponsorship agreements that we already have in place, those kinds of things. So that, that's all I'm saying. Um, any other questions?
Just so that I'm clear, let me see. I'm sorry, I was up. Um, from a board perspective, we would have to vote to approve using the capital bond money, correct?
Correct.
Um, because the athletic money is already on an item in the budget, we wouldn't have to do anything with that because they're still using it for athletics.
Yes.
So the only thing that essentially comes down to the board is the bond, correct?
Yes.
And we just wanted to be, we understand what's going on, so we just wanted to be transparent, so you know exactly. So, somebody walks up to you at Foodland, you, you can tell them.
I appreciate all of that information. I really do.
This is what we did. And Dr. Oberg was insistent and, uh, Mrs.
Haberchuk.
Haberchuk was insistent that we did it, we did it in that, we did it in that fashion. Mrs. H, she will now be running out. So it be written, so it be done. Any, any other questions?
I have two questions.
Go ahead.
My first one is, and I, I recognize this might not be exactly what, what we're getting in this presentation, but is there, is that like what we would be getting, what you showed us, this floor plan?
Yes, we, we also think though, before we would actually put the whole order in, we would sit down one more time with all the stakeholders and go through piece by piece by piece, because phys ed's been on board, everybody's been on board, the principals the whole way, but like say, all right, here it is, here's the sheet, here's the treadmill. Are we good with four of those treadmills? Like, do you want to, uh, slip an elliptical for a treadmill? You know, and then just that way, nobody, um, but, but we, we actually touched base with everybody again today, and we're, we're all on the same page, including the adults at night. So, um, we wanted to make sure that, uh, that's exactly right, but that doesn't mean you're right. There could be a little tweak or whatever, but nothing that would change the money and nothing that would change the look of 99% of that room.
And I guess that actually left me with three questions, because the next one is, is there, I know you mentioned, um, you know, upgrading as part of safety, you know, the equipment is older, et cetera. Is there less in what you plan on doing here than what there is currently in the room? Because this looks like there's a little more room to walk.
So what it is, is some of the machines, and, and Coach Perry could correct me, are compound machines. So i- in that room, you have the old circuits in circles to take up a lot of room. Now you might be doing, if you, if you sat this way, you might be doing shoulder press, and if you sit this way, you might be doing lat pull.
Right.
So we've taken some of the restricted area, my, my honor, Coach, uh, and, and minimized it on the sides, but kept in, in essence, almost every single station.
Right.
Because we thought that was important, um, in, in the whole, uh, drift of the program.
The design is just more streamlined.
Correct.
Right, right. Um, and then my last question, unless something else popped in my mind, um, once the warranty is up, you mentioned like five or six years, how, who, how are the repairs being covered?
Now, I think we would probably have to go back to some outside organization like Tri-State that will be willing to do that. But honestly, the, the major upkeep, um, other than belts and stuff like that, is upholstery. So you want to, when you get to that wear and tear part, you want to keep replacing the upholstery, because that's when the room starts to look bad, you don't keep the upholstery up to date, and we've done a good job of that, and I think our kids treat, treat it like that because of that. And if it looks bad, then they treat it that.
Right, right. Um, and how, how often has the upholstery been replaced in the current equipment?
It just depends like whether you do leg curl or, or like regular curl seems to go once a year.
Okay.
Where you do, uh, leg extension, not much. It just depends on how much, had how much use, how much, you know, whatever, uh, uh, friction is in that area that wears the upholstery out.
Okay. And what are, what are the costs associated with replacing the upholstery when it's repaired?
Um, it's, it's so, they, they would come to us, they would, they'd inspect four times a year, and then they come to us and say, we need whatever, a piece of upholstery for $85.
Okay.
It's not, it's not like $3,000, it's like $100 at a pump.
And that's part of your athletic budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
It's like in our, uh, in our like, um, reconditioning replacement, that, that category.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Shirley, is, is $50,000 that's from the capital bond, is that everything that's in that fund right now?
Uh, no, there's still a little bit more in there because of interest that has approved.
Could be using $50,000 of some greater amount.
Yeah.
And what other, what other things to that, or can it fund?
Anything that's capital projects related, which right now is funding the boiler projects and the chillers.
And we're going to change the lights in that room, we're going to put a new floor in that room, we're going to repaint that room, we're going to do everything to make it look brand new.
And I'm assuming that we've talked to Mr. McKee and there's nothing else?
Yes, he's on board. He's, he's a fan.
Looking at utilizing that money for.
Yes. So if we just did the cardio, it'd be $35,000 or $40,000 to do that again. So in essence, you're going to get a whole room for 108, as opposed to just new cardio, and then.
Cardio equipment.
Cardio equipment. And the, the world today, you know, uh, we could tariff everything by, by next year, and who knows what would happen, so, um, it, it probably won't get any less expensive, yes. If, if you want to keep the cardio equipment working at the standard, and it is buzzing, Coach, every machine, except for maybe the two old bikes, are buzzing, buzzing every minute of the day, with the exception of a change of period. They love the, all that stuff, you know, instead of playing kickball when they get older. Nothing wrong with kickball, though. Now, if you watch his middle school kickball, it's blood sport, but.
But I don't know any 50-year-olds who are still playing kickball three days a week.
No, there aren't, there aren't many, no. And, and selectorized equipment is, you know, it's just, I just think it's a, it's a piece. Wheeling or Planet Fitness, those are your choices, probably to go to the near gym that you can afford. Like, you could go to other gyms in, in town, but they cost you $80 a month, $50 a month. Here, you know, I, I think it's a benefit for everybody.
And it's available to the community three days a week at no cost.
Tuesday, Thursday, five to seven, Saturday, 10 to 12. We used to have a $25 yearly cost. It kind of went away with the pandemic. So if that's something that we want to restate, this might be a good time. Brand new room, you want, it's actually a good metric for us because we know actually who belongs and who they are, so I, I don't think the, the members would have a problem with that either.
Ms. Dalton, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And also Nate, thank you too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anything else you need me for?
No, thank you. All right, so at the, uh, May Board Meeting, administration will be asking, uh, the school board to approve a preliminary budget for the 2025, 2026 school year. Uh, Ms. Shirley Haberchuk is here tonight to present the monthly update, uh, on the school budget, so Shirley.
I love the microphone. I'm off in the. Michael, I need help. Look in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There we go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to first start with an update just on where we are for 2425. Just a quick update, um, we projected revenues of 34.9 million. As of March 31st, we were at 29.2, so about 83% of our budgeted revenue has been received, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. As for expenditures, we budgeted 35.9. As of March 31st, we have spent 24.8, so 69.1% of our expenditures that we, um, budgeted. I will say that at the end of March, we were at the 75% point of the fiscal year, but I will remind you that our teacher salaries are paid through July and August, which does hit the 2425 budget, not the 2526 budget, so we won't have a full picture until after August. Now for the 2526 general fund budget. The first slide here is going to be an overview of what we are projecting for our revenue to be. This is broken down by type of revenue, so you can see taxes. I have also provided to you what we actually received for years 21 through the 2324 year and what our budget was allocated for the 2425 year. The 2526, we still don't know what the Pennsylvania state budget is, so we are going off of what they have told us to date. So this could change, however, we need to have a proposed budget approved at the May Board Meeting, so we have to build this budget based on what we know now. So this is what I know now. The total revenues, 35.3 million, and I will be very transparent with you, that the tax revenue received in here is based on the index going up to what the state has allowed us to take it to. One way to look at our expenditures is by these objects, so we have objects as to salaries, benefits, the professional services and things like that. I have given the board members a little cheat sheet that explains every single one of those objects and what they entail. It's not all encompassing, but at least it gives you an idea of what our biggest expenditures are in those groups. Again, I have listed everything that were actual expenditure amounts from 2122 through 2324 and how we budgeted for 2425. Going through line item by line item, we are looking at a $37.2 million expenditure budget next year. Another way to look at this is by the function. So the state requires us to list our, um, accounting codes by function and then the object codes as well. By function, I also gave you a little cheat sheet that tells you everything that is included in those functions. Regular programs is basically everything that is student-related, special programs, everything that is special education-related, and so on. The data's the same, the numbers are the same, it's just a different way to cut and slice it for you to see the numbers. A few things that I will point out, especially on the object numbers, our biggest increase, purchase professional and technical services, those are outsourced costs to support our special needs programs, mostly occupational therapy, um, any type of outplacement that we have to do for students that have special needs that we cannot provide in-house, those costs are definitely increasing. The number of staff members that we can find even out in that. The number of staff members that we can find even out in that area, like special, um, speech pathology, for example, or occupational therapy, they're having a hard time finding employees, which is driving costs up even more because there's more competition for the same amount of available staff members. Another area that we are seeing a slight increase is the other purchase services, and that is going to be our transportation costs. Obviously, we have contracts with two transportation vendors and then, um, a small one with, uh, an outside carrier. Those contracts obviously have a slight increase from year to year, so we're seeing an, an slight increase there. This category also has our cyber charter school in it, so we're seeing increase in cyber charter costs as well. We really have no, not a lot of control over who enrolls in cyber charter school, and obviously, if they live in our district, we are required to pay those costs to the cy- cyber charter schools. One regular education student costs the district over fourteen thousand dollars, and one special education student costs the district over thirty thousand dollars for enrollment. It's in the five hundred other purchase services on the object slide, yep. Yes. Yes. Those are the two big, I mean, from year to year, our salaries and benefits contractually, they go up from year to year, but this year, we're seeing a big jump in our outsourced services and our cyber charter. Just for those of us who are visual, this is just a, a pie graph. Our biggest expenditure when it comes to our budget, sixty-six percent really is going to salary and benefits. Our assessment value, as I have told you already, decreased over fourteen million dollars this year, which already puts us in a negative as revenue received. That has basically been because of coal assessments and coal depletions. One tax mill for us generates nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, that's just taking the assessed values times point zero zero one, that gives us nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars per tax mill at the one-hundred percent collection rate. We budget ninety-six point two-five percent collection rate, which historically has been about ninety-six point two-five percent. That would then generate just about nine hundred thousand dollars for us. Our Act One Index again allowed us to go up point six-nine mils, which was actually less than what we could've raised it last year, but that would equate to an additional six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars total if we had a one-hundred percent collection rate. So here's the long and short of it, and it's not pretty. Expenditures looking at thirty-seven point two million. If we remain constant and leave our mileage rate at the thirteen point nine-three, we're looking at a two-point-five million dollar deficit. You can see all of the others that I have listed here. If we go up even to the index at the point six-nine mils, we're still looking at a little less than two million dollar deficit. I wanted to also just give you, uh, one tax example, I'm not going to throw a whole bunch of numbers at you, but our median assessed value in McGuffey is one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred dollars, that's the median assessed property value. So what that means is, there's half that are higher than that and half that are lower than that. At the ninth, at the thirteen point nine-three mils, that taxpayer has a tax obligation of two thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars, which is no change over last year, obviously. If we go up to the one-four point one-eight, fourteen point eighteen mils, which is a two-point-two-five mil increase, they will see an increased bill of thirty-eight dollars and seven cents for the year. Same with the fourteen point four-three, if you go up to that, they see seventy-six dollars and sixteen cent increase for the year. And then if we go up to the Act One Index, then they'll see a hundred and five dollars and nine cents more for the year. Now, this is before any homestead, farmstead exclusion. So homestead, farmstead exclusions give those taxpayers who are approved under those programs tax relief. So it subtracts what our pot of money is, we take our part of money and we divide it by how many people qualify for the program. We have not received our allocations yet from the state. They are to be out in April, it's April seventeenth, I don't anticipate them being here until April seventieth. However, I have, the one good news here is that we have heard that those allocations are increasing by as much as twenty percent. So that would be good because it would relieve some of those taxpayer obligations. In this example, I am using last year's farmstead, homestead relief number, which was three hundred and seventy-four dollars per applicant that was approved. So on that same one hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred assessed property, if we go up to the fourteen point six-two mils, their original tax obligation is two thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars. We would then subtract what they are eligible to receive through homestead, farmstead, which for last year was three hundred and seventy-four dollars, I don't anticipate it being any less than that, it should be more this year. So that takes their tax liability down to one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. A reminder on our general fund, we have categories of spendable, uh, which is our unassigned, non-spendable, which is something set aside for a specific reason, and then assigned, again, set aside for a specific reason. The only thing that we truly can spend from is our unassigned fund balance. We have an unassigned fund balance currently of two-point-five million. I say currently because when we approved the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we did so thinking we were going to take nine hundred thousand dollars out of those unassigned funds to balance that budget and to pay for all of our expenses for twenty-four, twenty-five, to get it balanced. That would take us down to then one point six million in unassigned. And as you can see, even taking taxes up to the maximum, we are looking at a way, one point nine million dollar deficit. So we have some work to do.
And we still don't know for the current budget, how much we'll have to take from the unassigned.
Right, and we probably won't know that until closer, till July, 'cause I can anticipate what we're gonna be paying for July and August for salaries and benefits.
So when we're looking at that, 'cause, you know, obviously, when you're talking about deficits, um, on page fourteen, the idea in theory would be that that deficit amount would come from the unassigned.
Absolutely.
Part of the general fund, so if you're, if you're looking at that, we don't have it there.
We don't.
And we don't know that, that, that is unassigned is gonna be that amount for the end of this year.
Yes, absolutely. So next step, um, we are going to have a budget working session, we need to go through some options, uh, moving forward into twenty-five, twenty-six and what that looks like. We need to adopt that proposed general fund budget at the May Board Meeting. We need to approve the final general fund budget at the June meeting so that I can have it reported to the state by the July fifteenth deadline.
Last year, um, we had asked about, I know you don't have the numbers yet, so the percentage of, of those who would benefit from the homestead, farmstead.
Right, and it changes every year based on who has applied.
Right.
And I have not received anything from the state regarding that.
Will you get that to us, that you have it?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you!
If I understand this right, if we raise taxes to the max, which would be point six-nine mils, we would still have a deficit of one point nine million dollars.
Correct.
And our current fund balance is two-point-five.
Correct.
But we don't know if it's gonna stay that.
Right.
You have any idea what, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but how much of that fund, uh, unassigned will have to go into this year's budget?
We had originally said it would be around nine, nine hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we're gonna use all nine hundred thousand dollars, we were fortunate to, it, we had range come in and redo at least, so we got some extra revenue there. Um, we have not spent some money in equipment for this year yet, no, we still have a few months to go in this fiscal year, but I, I don't think we're gonna use all nine hundred thousand. Maybe five hundred, but I would not say all nine hundred for sure.
So, if we did five hundred.
Then we're down to two.
Two million.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shirley. Alright, last on the committee this evening is our Policy Committee, um, which is made up of Mrs. Robarnick, Mrs. Frye, Mrs. Sabre, myself, and chaired by Mrs. Jackson. Um, we've been working, uh, once a month, uh, in that committee, and tonight to present Policy Zero Zero Six, which is on the agenda for a second read, uh, is Mrs. Jackson to give us an update, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you, um, several things, first of all, um, typically the process is, it's put out for the first reading, and during that, next month, we can get input from, you know, you're, you may have people from the community who's contacted you, you can, you know, bring it to us, to the committee, um, individual board members, it, um, provide input. We've had a lot of back and forths among the committee and with the solicitor as well. And then at the second reading, it, it is put on the agenda for a vote. That does not necessarily mean that we have to vote, it could go to a third reading if we needed to, um, but that is the idea. We, we will not deliberate it until the regular meeting, um, and once somebody makes a motion to approve, to approve it, um, and someone seconds it, then we can deliberate about it. Um, a moment deliberation could maybe be a decision that we wanna wait, I don't know, we'll have to see where that goes, but just to kinda keep that in perspective. So, uh, this is the first one that we've completed, I'm just gonna, each of you have a copy of the draft. Um, some of it was cleaning up some language, cleaning up some, um, citations that were inaccurate, um, those kinds of things. Uh, there are some things that the board, we're gonna have to, um, make a decision on too. So if you're looking at page three, at the top there, we went round and round and, round and round again on, uh, disquali- disqualification, disability, um, things like that, um. What we finally, as a, as a committee, that was, we would refer back to the solicitor, and the solicitor's recommendation is that we go back to the original wording and leave it alone. Um, because there are stipulations of disqualify, disqualification or disability in addition to other policies like zero, zero, four, or for example, not too long ago, we had a president who had a medical emergency and wasn't a- able to be here, that would be a disability. So what, it's a different way in looking at that, how that word is typically used, so the recommendation from solicitors to leave it alone. In the next section, in notice, um, under notice, and number one, we're taking out the word fiscal because our regular meetings aren't conducted on a fiscal year, the fiscal year is July first to June thirtieth, um, that's budget. Um, our meetings are, um, publicized by calendar year, so, um, we're, that's all, we're cleaning up there. Next, for six and seven, what you'll notice is that the two struck-out statements below just became statement six and seven, which is where they should've been anyway, so again, one of those areas where we just needed to clean up. Under regular meetings, that second paragraph at the bottom of the page, we no longer have an assistant superintendent, so we're taking that out. Um, and we're, we're changing, the board presidents and vice presidents shall be included in adding agenda items as requested by board members. At the top of the next page is, uh, where the board is gonna have to deliberate and to, and make a decision. Under regular meetings, um, what is currently the practice is, and that's what option one is, meetings shall have two public comment periods, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting. The other suggestion was option two, one combined, supposed to be combined with a D at the end, public comment period for agenda and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, after presentations, and before monthly action items. And we'll have to have more conversation about that as a board and decide as a majority, um, consensus of what we want. Along with that came up the discussion about, a familiar discussion for many people in this room, the time limit on the public participation, um, and there's of course, you know, lots of differing views on, on that as well. So we can discuss that, um, later when it becomes up. Under public participation, we are striking the sentence about a member of the public makes for us an opinion in a fa- in favor of or in opposition to an issue, um, but may not make negative comments about an individual or group of individuals, we're striking that because of First Amendment concerns. Um, obviously, our recommendation would always be to speak with respect and courtesy to everybody else in the room. Um, but we can't dictate somebody's First Amendment rights, so that was the reason for, uh, taking that out. On page five, three C, again, just cleaning up language, um, 'cause, you know, we don't have an assistant district, uh, superintendent, so just leaving it, uh, the appointing the, the district superintendent and supervisory position. On page six, X and Y, um, striking the statement removing of a school director, and, um, then you have the, the other qualifying statement, which is what we're keeping, if a board member neglects or refuses to attend to succ- excuse me, successive regular meetings of the board unless detained by sickness or prevented by en- by necessary absence from the district, or if an attendance at any meeting he or she neglects or refuses to act in his or her official capacity, as a school director, the remaining members of the board may declare such office vacant on the affirmative vote of majority of the remaining members of the board. Um, and just to keep in mind that the legal definition of attendance to be in attendance in a, in a meeting means you can be heard and you, um, can hear what's going on. So that doesn't necessarily mean you have to be physically present, you could attend remotely, as long as you can be heard and you can hear, that's attended. That's the legal definition, correct, is true.
That's correct.
Uh, and then the next one, Y, striking declaring a vacancy exist in the board by reason of the failure or neglect of a school director to qualify. There's a lot of misunderstanding, and quite frankly, even among board members about what it that means, uh, when you talk about disqualification. Um, and so, uh, the next sentence is very clear. If a person elected or appointed as a board member, having been notified, refuses or neglects to qualify as such director, the remaining members may, within ten days follow, following the beginning of his or her term of office, declare said office vacant on the affirmative vote of a majority of the remaining board members, remaining members of the board. And to be clear, the, those two, in X and Y, that's, the only thing we're doing is striking the beginning sentences, the rest of that was already there, and we're leaving it there, okay, that would be the recommendation. And then we were, um, adding, um, D, A, A, and A B, um, removing of an officer of the board, um, and there needs to be a space between Y and Z. Um, removing an, of an appointee of the board, adopting, amending, or repealing a policy or procedure of the board. The next change comes on the next page, page seven. In the second paragraph after number seven, um, cleaning up some language there, the district, not necessarily the board secretary, but the district shall audio and or video record, nobody really audiotaped anymore, and we haven't for a long time. Um, and we did, want to clarify that that is digitally, all meetings and tape per review for six months. And then you'll see the beginning of the next change at the very bottom, um, eliminating the heading discussion sessions and that paragraph, and, um, I think we're keeping, I think this is how it was originally, if I'm correct, just committee, correct?
Correct.
Um, was how it was, we went round and round and round, took the scenic route, uh, in the discussion on the. Um, was how it was, we went round and round and round, took the scenic route, uh, in the discussion on this. But, um, we're gonna leave it as committee, um, and then everything else, um, is moved underneath committee there. Those are the recommended changes from the policy committee, um, and we'll look forward to, uh, more in-depth conversation later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jackson. I'm Mr. Vice President. That is all I have for today.
Okay. So we're gonna adjourn? We do ten minutes?
We can go with it.
Yes. So we'll reconvene at seven fifteen?
Thank you.
Meeting to order please. This is Cybert, roll call please.
This is Bry.
Here.
Mr. Grove.
Here.
Captain.
Present.
Mr. Lacy.
Here.
Mr. Barnett.
Here.
Present.
Here. Okay, for a prayer, I would like to introduce Ed Shingle with the Tor Christian Church.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day that we can gather here, Lord. Especially this time of year, we'd like to thank you for your plan of salvation that required Jesus to be the sacrifice for our sins, Lord. But we know that he did not stay in that grave and he rises again victorious over death. We pray, Lord, that you'll be with everyone here tonight, that give us the discernment to realize that people had to die for our freedoms to gather here tonight. Our freedom to govern ourselves, which includes this school board. Help us to discern and do good things for the community, for the students, so that this can remain one nation under God. We give you all the praise, all the glory, and all the honor, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Okay, everybody please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I plead with the freedom of the United States of America and the due republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, an executive session was held this evening at 5:00 PM for personnel and collective bargaining. Oh, okay. So Keith, do we have anybody for public comments this evening? Mr. Bry, President, we do. I will call Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Well, Mrs. Jordan's coming up. I just want to clarify, a head member of the community asked me about speaking on the fitness room that was presented. I'm correct, and my advice was it's not an agenda item because we're not being asked to act on the GOB, correct? Yes, GOB, you know what I mean. The capital one. Yeah, so if they wanted to talk about it, it would be non-agenda. I just want to make sure it was correct, thank you.
Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I just have a few things tonight. I'm a little curious why with all the resignations from the district that we are now all of a sudden posting them as numbers. I think the community should know who's resigning, even though we don't get to know why. And I just think it's odd with all the controversy with everybody leaving that we are now posting numbers instead of names. And I'm going to give you my usual spill you get every year when you're hiring coaches. Will you please consider doing parent surveys before you hire? And I will stand up here every time you're hiring coaches and I will say the same thing. I think our input could be valuable if only you would give us the opportunity. And my last thing for agenda is Policy 006 Second Reading. There has been the suggestion that we combine the two sessions. And I know many of you will be tempted to use that option of one public speaking time because there are those of you on this board who don't really want to hear from the community. So I just want to share my two thoughts. One, I believe if you make it into one combined time, you're taking the attention away from the agenda items. The first speaking time has always been for agenda items prior to your vote. I would like to see it stay that way. I'm sure because I'm saying that, there will be those who vote completely opposite just because it's something I would like to see happen. And my second point is if you combine them and you don't leave an opportunity at the end for a community to speak, we're never going to be able to go into the next meeting having left behind what was done at the previous meeting. Because anything we're going to want to say that would have been said at the end of that night is now going to be carried over to the next meeting. And I know some would like to think that cooler heads will prevail if you make us sit on it for a month. I will tell you, I'm not one of those people. The longer you make me wait, the angrier I get about things. So I would just like you to take those two things into consideration when you're making a decision on whether you combine them or leave them as if. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. President, Tiffany Walker, you?
Well, I wanted to make those comments about your agenda and about... My name's Tiffany Walker, I live in South Franklin, Donacle. Now, one comment I want to make about your agenda is your sports...
South Franklin.
South Franklin slash Donacle.
Oh, you can put the note?
I have two different houses.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Right around the corner from each other, right around the... It's really weird. But anyway, I'm going to make a comment about your agenda on your sports. I feel like some of your sports are unfair. When does a senior go on junior varsity? What fairness is that to the seniors? Let's say this senior all of a sudden wants to do a sport, but they're not going to be able to play on a varsity because they weren't playing the sport the whole time. Or how about a senior who has played this sport the whole time and never had a chance to be on varsity? I think every senior should be on a varsity team. They're graduating, who cares? Since when, and I'm going to use this example because this is one of the sports my child chose to do and now will no longer do because of the body shame, the unfairness, and the favoritism with cheerleading. Since when do we go based off a point? Why are we basing things off points when they should be based on the grades they're at and how hard they have worked? Why are we reprimanding kids from their grades of last year where they can't play two games the following year? That was last year. Why are we reprimanding them in the new year? New year, new start, correct? How we're getting taught, right? So I think we need to look into how things are being coached, especially not fair to our seniors or even our juniors that have cheered or played football or whatever sport their whole life that has still stand here and be on a JV team when they work their ass off. I have, pardon my French, I sometimes don't watch my mouth, but I will put it out there, I get a little feisty. I even witnessed it in youth, in youth. My son plays football. He should have been on the varsity team. Any youth I've seen, when they hit their senior year, they're on the varsity team. Wouldn't you know? His whole family came to watch him on his senior night and he didn't get to play once. He had to sit there on the sidelines because he's in JV and we want to win a game. Those are youths, who cares about winning a game? Why aren't the kids having fun? Why are they being reprimanded by these coaches because the coaches want to win? I don't give a damn just much as cheerleading, this is not a competition cheer. This is a school cheerleading team. You want to have competition, cool, have that separate. But as far as the school competition team, every cheerleader wants to experience being out on that field at that high school. And I think it's very unfair that especially all of a sudden this year, we go by points and not by grade because there is a senior that is very upset she is on the JV team. So I'm here speaking because my daughter no longer wants to do cheerleading because of the unfairness that has been happening in the past couple of years. Thank God my son is still wanting to do football even though he's a little pinion and it's already, he still wants to do it, I'm glad. I don't want him, he loves football. But I don't think it's fair that these coaches take somebody who loves something so much and just keeps downgrading or not let them succeed or not let them move up. I mean, come on, juniors and seniors are here waiting to get on the varsity team. There's no competition here. Let them play. Why are we putting them in categories? It makes no sense. You guys really need to look into that, really, really hard. This ain't a competition, this is a sport that you're going to go out and play, have fun and play. I mean, who gives a shit if we win or lose? We haven't won, so why can't they have fun? So I think you guys need to very, very much look into that. And that's all I got to say on that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bry, President, final one person, Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township.
Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township. I'm going to be the nice one out of all of us tonight so far. So I definitely would love you guys to consider what these ladies behind me have said. And what I'm going to talk about is a retirement. As a graduate of McGuffey and a former student of Ms. Emeterio, known to me as Ms. Mamar, I want to say to you, congratulations on your retirement and thank you for being a wonderful teacher to myself, my oldest child, and countless other students in the district throughout the years. Your joyful spirit, dedication and dedication to teaching and compassion that you presented to present every day for 25-plus years is what makes people like you so memorable. Thank you again and may God bless you on your next journey. Ms. Mamar was one of my favorite teachers in high school and she was a great asset to the school. And I hope you guys realize what you have and what is going to be going. And I'm just glad to have been one of her students. She made a difference in my life, so thank you.
Thank you.
That is all, Mr. Bry, President. That's all. Okay, moving on. Item number one, approval of the March 20, 2025 minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes on the March 26, 2025 school board meeting as submitted?
The move second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No, sent? Motion carries. Okay, item number two, approval of the general fund schedule of bills. May I have a motion to approve the general fund schedule of bills from March the 21st, 2025 to April the 17th, 2025, check number 80617 to check number 80753 and the amount of $763,054.18 as submitted.
The move second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, approval of the food service schedule of bills. May I have a motion to approve the food service schedule of bills dated April 17th, 2025, check number 7790 to check number 7793 and the amount of $72,368.2 as submitted.
The move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, approval of treasurer's report. May I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of March 2025 as submitted?
The move second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number five, the GOB Series 2021 bill list. May I have a motion to approve the GOB Series 2021 bill list and the amount of $4,375 as submitted.
The move second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So donation, superintendent's report. Okay, thank you.
So we are asking, well, accept the donation for the Rangers resources for $1,000 for transportation to the Bratford House for eighth grade field trip per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy number 702, gifts, grants, and donations.
The move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you to Rangers Resources, that was very nice.
Yes.
You're here?
Yep.
Okay, so under donation number two, can I get a mo... We have to do a motion for? Can I get a motion to accept the donation from Dove Contracting for $200 for the middle school Pinewood Field Trip per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy 702, gifts, grants, and donations.
The move second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Another thank you to them.
Donation number three, can we get a motion to accept the donation from McGuffey Choir Beasters? The amount determined... Okay, so it's an amount to be determined to cover the full cost of the wall wraps for the music slash band rooms per the terms of McGuffey School District Policy number 702, gifts, grants, and donations.
The move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I wanted to say something. We got to see them when we were coming over and they are awesome. Thank you, thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
If you didn't get to see them, maybe they can...
Yeah. Yeah, that was very nice, thank you.
With the amount to be determined, this is stating that no matter what the cost is, they're going to cover it. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, so for executive session recommendations, number one, can I get a motion to approve the settlement and agreement release between McGuffey School District and McGuffey Education Association and employee number 421 as presented?
The move second.
Any discussion there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under personnel or retirement, can I get a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Ms. Jody White effective July 1st, 2025 as per the terms and conditions of the current agreement between McGuffey Board of Directors and the McGuffey Education Support Professionals?
The move second.
And she's been with us a long time, we really wish her all the best. For me?
Definitely with regret.
Yeah, Ms. Jody White has been in the district for 32 years. She is a McGuffey graduate and has been the right hand to Mr. Michael.
We wish her well, but sure she'll be missed.
She will be.
Did we actually vote on it?
There's no other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number two, irrevocable retirement. Can I get a motion to accept with regret the irrevocable retirement of Ms. Linda Emeterio effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position?
The move second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to say thank you to Mrs. Emeterio. She and I actually started teaching at the same time. She has not only been an exemplary teacher, but she is truly a friend to every McGuffey employee, student. She believes in blue and gold and she has carried herself with great panache, which she will be definitely dearly missed.
Mrs. Emeterio has 30 years with McGuffey and as Ms. Florian had mentioned earlier, very much beloved by past presidents. Will be missed.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number three, irrevocable retirement. May I have a motion to accept with regret the irrevocable retirement of Ms. Rita Ross, school counselor, effective at the conclusion of the 2024-2025 school year and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position?
The move second.
Ms. Rita Ross has 29 years in education. 20 of those have been at McGuffey. I understood today it was not... So I was corrected. Most of her time has been as a school counselor, but...
She started, I remember when she started as a biology teacher, so yes.
Also will be missed.
Very much.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number four, resignation. May I have a motion to accept the resignation of employee number 2448 effective April 3rd, 2025 and authorize administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position?
The move second.
Any discussion there?
Do we know why that the new trend is to put the numbers in instead of their names like previously?
That was on my recommendation and I'm happy to discuss it in executive session.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number four, resignation. May I have a motion?
Number five.
So we did not do... I'm glad that I didn't read that, that's how that went. Okay, so number five, may I have a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation of employee number 2562 effective April 25th, 2025 and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position?
The move second.
Any comments or questions there? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number six, substitute nurses. May I have a motion to approve Stephanie Kay as a substitute nurse for the 2024-2025 school year, retroactive to April the 7th, 2025?
The move second.
I have a question. So we used to source somebody, right, who would provide to... Right, so I just want to be clear, these, we're looking at acquiring our own substitute list for nurses, correct? So we would not be paying an outside agency to do that.
One of the things we're presenting in the budget is looking at changes for next year for sure.
Yeah, which is, I think, how we used to do it years ago.
Are they contracted or...
No, usually through the substitute nurses.
Right, but I mean, are they contracted with the nurses with McGuffey? Are they contracted with the district? I'm just not familiar with how their employment is.
It'd be kind of like substitute teachers, you don't really have a contract, but you're on a list. And so when they need, they call somebody from the list and that person can either come or not. But they're not con... There's not a contract.
Okay, okay, thank you.
They're not subject to our collective bargaining agreement, I think was your question.
Well, yeah, essentially, is our nurse, our lieutenant?
Okay, okay, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number seven, substitute nurse. May I have a motion to approve Sarah Gratz and Catherine Till as substitute nurses for the 2024-2025 school year pending receipt of all required clearances and Act 168 verification?
The move second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number eight, substitute teacher. May I have a motion to approve Elizabeth Kraus as a substitute teacher for the 2024-2025 school year, pending receipt of all required clearances and Act 168 verif...
Second.
Any discussion?
I'm excited, she's one of ours. That's wonderful.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, number nine, addition to the substitute list, the motion to approve Mr. Nicholas Donkles for the placement of the 2024-2025 McGuffey Substitute Paraeducator and Student Substitute Teacher List pending of all clearances and required documents.
The move second.
So we can discuss. Required documents, I'm assuming that would include Act 168? Okay.
Is he related to Mrs. Vogel? Yes, oh, that's... Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, additional driver for first student. May I have a motion to approve Chet Welk as a driver for first student for the 2024-2025 school year, pending receipt of all required clearances as presented?
The move second.
Any discussion?
It's outside of the workplace. And the... I was just saying, and the routes themselves are outside of his administrative hours.
Actually currently, he is first student for Vans, not for Vans. He licensed for Vans. It's effectively before and after. The question was what time does he start being at the run? It varies, usually between 3:00 and 3:30. Whatever time the run will start.
What time do they start being at the run?
Usually, whatever it is, it would be usually between 7:30 and 7:45. It would be based on whatever time the last truck off.
And he'd be doing Van runs, not us runs, right? So that does take a long.
I don't know, but the whole time my children were in school, Mr. Buckhold and Mrs. Derrywell, they all did it. So it must be able to be done.
All good, Ken? Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number 11, rehire head boys basketball coach for the winter sports season. May I have a motion to rehire Mr. Michael Fattigani as head boys basketball coach for the 2025-2026 winter sports season as per the terms and conditions of the MEA agreement and completion of the 2025-2026 respective seasons. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number 12, rehire the head wrestling coach. May I have a motion to rehire Mr. Jared Roberts as the head wrestling coach for the 2025-2026 winter sports season as per the terms and conditions of the MEA agreement and completion of the 2025-2026 respective seasons. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number 13, rehire head girls basketball coach. May I have a motion to rehire Mrs. Holly Meehan as the head girls basketball coach for the 2025-2026 winter sports season as per the terms and conditions of the MEA agreement and completion of the 2025-2026 respective seasons. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 14, rehire the cheer sponsor. May I have a motion to rehire Mrs. Jessica Gump as head cheerleading sponsor for the 2025-2026 fall and winter sports season as per the terms and conditions of the MEA agreement and completion of the 2025-2026 respective seasons. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated. Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna stay.
Okay. Okay, 15, rehire the head rifle coach. May I have a motion to rehire Mrs. Sarah Florian as head rifle coach for the 2025-2026 winter sports season as per the terms and conditions of the MEA agreement and completion of the 2025-2026 respective seasons. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so on to policy. Number one, policy 006, I did the second reading. May I have a motion to approve policy 006 for adoption with suggested, suggested revisions?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there?
Yes, we definitely need to discuss the options that we looked at. Option one or option two. So if you're looking at the policy at the top of page four, and again, this is for public participation, the suggestions were either to leave it as it is, meaning still have two public comments, period, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end of the meeting, or option two, one combined public comment period for agenda and non-agenda items at the beginning of the meeting, after presentations and before monthly action items. And just for clarity, the timing is not a policy. It's not part of the, so how long they have to speak is not part of the policy. That's anything, the board can make that determination anytime they want, which is part of like a consensus of how we want to handle that. It's been different things at different times. The most recent vote that we had on it was seven minutes for agenda items and five minutes for non-agenda items. And that's been discussed in a variety of ways multiple times. But that's kind of separate from the policy. The policy is just looking at when they have an opportunity to speak.
I, I like see the two opportunities because I think it gives everybody the same chance. Maybe they listened to something and then it brought something to mind and I just think it's more open and more transparent to give them two opportunities. That's my opinion.
I agree. I think the two public comment periods was fought for to begin with not that long ago and to eliminate it, you know, it's, it's just not right to, we've-
Stifled them.
Yes, it stifled them, correct. I would like to, I would like to keep it with the, with option one, the two public comment periods. Honestly, I'd be okay with, I know the timeframes aren't in the policy, but I'd even be open to discussing, eliminate the timeframes this evening as well.
Why wasn't the, the timeframes added to the policy?
That's not because you don't link, you don't tie the hands, your hands or the future board's hands with, that can change at any time. It's a matter of-
There's probably a better wording for that, Mrs. Strum.
It's a matter of board prerogative rather than board policy. So the board prerogative right now is seven minutes for the first public comment period and five minutes for the second public comment period. And that could be changed at any time, discussed and changed at any time.
But that, this is just for clarity. That wouldn't mean that we couldn't add a timeframe to the policy if the board would want to, correct? Because the policy can also be revisited and revised at any given time as well by the board, whether now or in the future. I'm just clarifying.
Provide, revise the policy anytime they want.
Okay, thank you.
I personally, I would not put the time limit in the policy. I think it makes more sense to have it. That way, if you want to revisit it, you don't have to open up the whole policy just for that one item. And I, I do think that there's something to be said in preserving the authority of future board members, the prerogative of future board members and not lock them in by what those of us sitting here tonight may, may think. But I also will say, and this may shock some people, but I really, I like option two. And one of the reasons was kind of hinted at earlier, I do think that there is something to be said for having some time to reflect before we speak. The one at the end of the meeting for agenda and non-agenda items, to me, seems superfluous and often creates hostility. I will tell you, in my life, I go around most of the time repeating James in my head, the book of James, slow to speak, quick to listen, slow to anger, for my own benefit. So I think it, I, that's one of the reasons why. I think it would help the meeting flow better. Anything that one would want to address there, they could, and I know there are people who said they would, address them at the next meeting, and that would be their prerogative, but that's just my view.
Should we just do a consensus vote, consensus vote then for option one and two? And then a regular vote on the policy?
Do we motion for an A and a B? Like, does it have to be?
You can do it either way. Right now I've got three votes for two and none for one. So if the rest of the meeting board just wants to weigh in, I'm happy to keep four over here.
Before we do that, for transparency, why don't we put the times in there? Community members are not going to know what the time limits are if they can't look it up in the policy.
I don't know.
I know it can change at any time.
I didn't create this policy. It would just be whatever the policy committee put forth for you guys to look at tonight. Yes. Which is what I was just asking, how do they know now? Well, they know now because the times are on the agenda, which is available to the public prior to the meeting. You can always throw this policy back to the policy committee and ask them to revise it too. But don't, don't forget that there's a motion second on the floor. You could motion to table it, to table it. I mean, there's a lot of different things we could do.
I like option one.
How about just keep it the same? We have it now.
Which is option one, yeah.
I think it's option one, yeah.
Yeah, two times to speak.
So that's five. That's five for option one. Five, keep the same as it is now. So that's your majority. So if you vote to approve the policy this evening, we will strike option two and it will be including option one only. So your vote tonight for, for policy 006, that Chad, Mr. Thomas is going to call in a moment here, will include option one as your revision.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Okay, yeah, I have. It would be number three. X and Y.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Number three.
Number three on what page?
Pages on number-
Are they are at the bottom, right?
At the bottom, right corner.
That looks like six.
Five. Sorry, six. Six or eight. X and Y. I would just like to ask the listeners, is this legal?
Yes, so what you're removing is you're actually removing the link, 38 linked to policy 004, which is redundant because this is actually the language straight out of the Pennsylvania school code. And the same for Y.
Thank you.
Yes, it's both for X and Y. That's straight out of the Pennsylvania school code.
Any other discussion? We already have the motion and the second, right? So it's just all those in favor to adopt policy 006 as discussed. So just by saying as discussed, that includes option number one. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Don't forget to put a space in between Y and Z. Thank you.
Okay, so number two, policy 827, conflict of interest, says that we do not need a vote this evening because it's just the first reading.
Correct. There's not a whole lot of change there. Just cleaning up a few things, but anyone has any input, get it to me and we'll, I'll get to the policy committee. And we've been meeting the second Tuesday of the month.
Okay, under business. Number one, school van. So they have a motion to approve the purchase of a 10-passenger 2018 Ford Transit F-150 for $28,750. So moved.
Second. Good price.
Whoever negotiated it, I'd like them to negotiate my next vehicle.
Why am I not surprised?
Special thanks to Mr. McKee. He actually flew down on his airline miles to Raleigh, North Carolina. He has two sisters down there that he was able to spend a little bit of time with and then drive directly home. And now the van itself is being currently serviced by someone that he knows in Unionville that transmits. So it's going to be better than new once we receive it back. So again, great. So thank you, Mr. McKee.
So shouldn't we reimburse him for his house?
The airline miles?
Oh, all right, okay.
All, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number two, transportation routing and management license agreement. They have a motion to approve the annual renewal license agreement between McGuffey School District and Orbit Software Incorporated at a cost of $3,280 from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion there?
I would just like to, and if Mr. Wilson would be willing, maybe to, to explain to people what exactly that is, what it does. Time saver. Well, and for, for the district as well, because that's not time spent. You can spend it on other things. Thank you.
Mr. Ashford, posting notes and things.
Yes, he did. I remember that very clearly.
Okay, any other comments there? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Number three, subscription renewal, Renaissance. They have a motion to approve the annual subscription in McGuffey School District Renaissance at a cost of $16,710.72 from August the 1st, 2025 to July the 31st, 2026. Second? Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Number four, website renewal. They have a motion to approve the annual website renewal between McGuffey School District and EMS Link LLC at a cost of $6,356.09 from July the 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
So moved. Second.
This is where our website, everything is posted on, this is the one that provides the technology for us.
Was there any, I always ask this question, was there any shopping around to see if there was anything cheaper or it wasn't really?
A few years ago, we did that when we were looking at different sites. We haven't done it for this current year. We're very comfortable with it.
It was a good price. Right, right, okay. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number five, facilities use agreement, Relay for Life. May I have a motion to approve the use of McGuffey Stadium for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life for Friday, May the 16th, 2025?
Second.
Any discussion there? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number six, the agreement for EQT Park. May I have a motion to approve the facilities use agreement for EQT Park with McGuffey School District Boys Baseball and Washington County Family Entertainment as presented?
I'll second, so we can discuss.
Discussion there?
That's the console park?
The Wild Thing Stadium?
Yeah.
And I think it's-
Is it the Wild Thing? I was just gonna ask.
I know it had a different name.
Because when it's been presented before, it's been presented as Wild Things.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Is this, this same thing as, oh, yeah, what was it? Was it last year or the year before that there was a lot of controversy about using Wild Things and it costing so much money? Is this the same thing that was voted on at that time?
So this, this again, this year as it was last year, there is a donation for the use of that stadium. So it's not going to be outside money coming from us. We, two years ago, I believe, was I said that whatever the remainder was, that the boost is not able to pay for it in last year and like this year, there's someone's going to pay for the entire season.
Okay. Very cool, thank you.
That member goes in as a, like reported to upsend the donation.
It's just that there's no payment.
Right, because they'll pay directly to them instead of paying it through us. Now with the, with the cleaning charge, the $500 cleaning charge, how would that be handled? um, with the cleaning charge, or the five hundred dollar cleaning charge, how would that be handled if, if for whatever reason there would be a charge for cleaning? Would that be the boosters that handle that, that take care of that, or is that gonna come back to the board? For approval, or it would be? I just don't know how that works.
I'm not, I don't know the specific language that would be there. I would assume, because then I wanna do that, it'd probably come back on the district, but I'm looking to that.
I would like the motion to table it till we know.
Would be any different than us providing our receiving services after a football game?
Which is in the line, is in the budget.
Yeah.
Which is what I was thinking, like, there's money there for those purposes anyway. But for our purposes, right? Well, but they could, if they're spending it for that expense, it doesn't really matter whether it's here or there, or the expense is the same. I remember we approved that last month, the Claysville Community Park reusing. We had an agreement. Do, I can't recall if, did we have to provide liability insurance?
No, they do.
We, well, the policy reads that the superintendent has the discretion to ask them to provide liability insurance. Ms. Albert Chuck.
I mean, we carry our own as well, but there's.
So in this one, we're required to carry? My computer just.
Oh, correct, so I can't see what.
We have a certificate of insurance program to show fair liability policy.
Okay.
So is that about McGuffey Claysville Park or EQT Park? That's what you were asking about?
Yes. I guess I was just kind of questioning if there was an expense for us.
Ms. Albert Chuck.
How much would an organization be willing to pay for a naming right of a stadium?
Are you talking about the Wild Thing Stadium? Or are you talking about our?
Actually, our stadium.
Yeah.
Probably not quite as much as the Wild Thing.
Yeah, exactly. Um, we have different sponsorship levels. Twenty thousand is what we were hoping to get for naming rights for one year. And we're willing to work with any partners who would like to do that, um, that, we could always negotiate pricing and how long.
We don't have one yet, though, right?
We do not. I'm actually in talks right now with, um, a corporation that may be willing to sponsor the wellness center, the weight room. And I'm hopeful that that will be somewhere. So, yes, we're doing, we're talking.
Thank you. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, number seven, Anderson Price invoice dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Uh, so can I get a motion to approve the payment to Anderson Price for invoice dated March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five? Any amount of four thousand, five hundred dollars as submitted.
The move. Second.
Any discussion there? All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next, administration reports. Number one, or the first one, facilities use report.
Mr. Vice President, um, we've had total use of sixty-two times in the building in March. Uh, thirty of that is our community primarily used in youth girls and boys basketball, as well as family bingo night at Jordan.
Uh, number two, the budget expenditure report. So that the budget expenditure report for the month of March twenty twenty-five is presented for your review. Cafeteria report, same thing. And the same thing for the P-card spending report. Uh, so what sort of report?
This also has no report, Mr. President.
Alright, uh, next one, Western Area Career and Technology Center report.
Yes, um, so the weekly updates are there for your view. Um, I did get this week's weekly update today, since tomorrow is Friday. Um, but with respect to Sunshine Act, I did not request that it be added to the agenda. So if you'd like that, I can always send it to you, but it is also found on their Facebook page, um, which I share everywhere because they're just, they're doing great things there. Um, we, um, have not had a meeting since the last, last month's meeting that we held. Um, that meeting for this month is actually next week. So other than the weekly reports, that is all I have for this evening.
Alright, number two, Pennsylvania School Board Association report.
Yeah, I gave you a, a long list last time, and there's really nothing to update. The Safety and Security Board's report will be available on May the twenty-eighth at ten o'clock in the morning, and it is a webinar. This might be interesting to some of you. They are asking for presenters for their big, uh, Fall Leadership Conference. It takes place in, at one site, at Mechanics Park. But they need people, so if you have something you feel or anybody can present there, then you, that's what they are asking for. They're also asking for performers, so if any of you have a comic sideline or something, there you go. Um, reminder to update yourself on AI and education, because there are move, there's movement going on there, even at the state level, so just kind of keep informed and I'll, when they send something, I'll let you know. That's really all that I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, Policy Committee report.
Um, so obviously, we completed policy zero zero six and we passed question light, so that's great news moving forward. Um, the draft for policy eight twenty-seven is, uh, was made available tonight as the first reading. Uh, again, um, if anyone has any questions or, um, suggestions or anything like that, um, please get them to me, I'll get them to the committee, um, and we'll go from there. We're looking at trying to put together kind of like a timeline of policies and in what order we're gonna look at them. So we've requested information from, um, key administrative personnel, uh, if, to ask if they have any policies that they need looked at, um, in a particular order and at a certain timeline. Um, and then, uh, we also have some committee members who have put forth, um, some interest in other policies as well. If there is a particular policy that any board member would like for us to, uh, look at putting on that rotation, please get that to me, um, and I'll kind of filter it in. Our goal is to try to get, in theory, um, two done at a time, kind of working on two at a time. Um, sometimes, zero zero six took us a while. Um, eight twenty-seven, not so much. So, and that's just kind of the way they go. Um, but the very next one that we're gonna be looking at is a request from Dr. Oberg in relation to actually AI. Um, uh, and, uh, we'll be excited to get that to the board as soon as we can. So, uh, again, our meetings, uh, they are public meetings. Um, they are the second Tuesday of the month at four PM and are currently being held in the conference room in the administrative suite.
The one for AI, is that creating a new policy or updating?
Well, it's, there's two, but, um, Dr. Oberg can speak to that.
No, there, there doesn't have anything in our policy currently that exists that we're, nothing in our policy right now that has anything to do with AI. So we need to address that, and it'll go along with our separate use, so two policies, hopefully, yeah, simultaneously.
Okay, any else there? Okay, uh, so, public comment on non-agenda and agenda items. Mr. Vice President, we call Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough.
Good evening, Jessica Peel, Claysville Borough. So wonderful to see you all again this month. Um, I wanted to first thank the school board for sponsoring the Roaming Bean coffee truck that we had yesterday before our in-service. Um, I think it was thoroughly enjoyed by all. Um, so it was a wonderful surprise. Thank you so very much. Um, the, uh, only other thing I wanted to touch on, uh, this month was, um, Teacher Appreciation Month is coming up. I'm sorry, it should be month, year, really.
It's a week. But it's a week?
It's a week. It's a whole week. Teacher Appreciation Week, uh, is next month, May ninth, or I'm sorry, May fifth through the ninth. Um, so I just wanted to take a quick moment, uh, to shout out our amazing staff. Um, we may not be a huge school compared to others in our area, but we are mighty. And that is in part due to our amazing, uh, the dedication of our amazing teachers and staff. I recently had a conversation with a staff member that shared that she's noticed that in comparison with other large schools and even similar sized schools, um, that we offer just as much, if, if not more, than, uh, some of our other local school districts. And sometimes, in many instances, we do it a lot better. Uh, I believe that is a true testament of the hard work and care given on a daily basis by our amazing staff and, uh, our teachers. We are so very lucky here at McGuffey School District to have what we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Vice President, we call Tiffany Walker, South Franklin Township.
Alright, you already met me, so now I'm up here as a very angry and frustrated parent. And I'm very disappointed in this district and almost, and especially you, Dr. Oberg. I am very disappointed. You all sit in this seat because we voted you to be in this seat, to protect our children, to make sure the safety of our children are at heart here, right? Correct? So can you explain to me your bully policy and how we think it's great and we don't need to change it? Any of you? None of you can explain this? Alright, why are so many kids leaving this school and going cyber? I know why. I've talked to the parents. Have any of you reached out to these parents? And go, why we have so many cyber kids? Oh, well, you know the biggest problem we have? Bullying up in this school. Is it everywhere? Yeah, but in this school, we don't know how to handle it. So, okay, I'm being bullied, I retaliate, I'm in trouble too. Right? So the other day, I had the opportunity being the most scared mother of my life. I had text messages coming in from my little boy in sixth grade. Help, these, these kids are gonna attack me, they're gonna jump me, help me, they're, they're surrounded, can you help me? I called up to the office and asked for one of the principals to go yank him. You know why he's getting teased? Because he chose not to fight back one of his friends. He still got in trouble for it, by the way. Even though he didn't throw no hands, he still got in trouble and got kicked out. My kid's an A and B student, loves school, now he's scared. Now I'm pissed. My kids should never be scared to come to up here at McGuffey, ever. Now my kids' grades are starting to show for it. Why? What is your bully poli-, you don't think, you, you think your bully policy is great, Dr. Oberg? What are you doing to help these principals? With all the riffraff that happens? What are you doing? Are you filling these schools and helping these principals? I know I've never caught you in one. In fact, the only time I've ever caught you is you sitting back in your chair and enjoying the show between me and Mr. Bonus last year. Instead of stopping. Well, Mr. Bonus said he messed up. Did you step in and reprimand Mr. Bonus? No, you still sat back in your, what are you doing to keep these kids safe? Because I haven't seen it yet. I have not seen it yet. For a parent who has to deal with that from my kid, to where when I call up and ask for somebody to go down and get him out of the band room, and then none of you can go fast enough, well, not you guys, but you or the principals or one of the teacher couldn't go fast enough. My daughter in high school ran out of her classroom to go down to save her little brother. She come down in that hallway and heard these kids backing him up, calling him a sissy, calling him mama. Oh, you little snitch, oh, you let your friend beat you up, cornering him. There's a substitute teacher sitting on her phone. Oh, there was a substitute teacher sitting there on the phone when my daughter walked in here. Okay? He is the smallest kid you got in this school. He is not a punching bag. And I'd be damned if I'm gonna let him continue being a punching bag. This ain't right, so if, if, if any of y'all have a problem with my kids, y'all could pay the tuition for us to go to another school and provide transportation. Because I'm not gonna put up with it no longer. I don't get it. I just don't get it. Your in-school detention is a joke. What, what, if I'm gonna sit in this freaking goddamn room? Where am I learning? Where's my discipline? There is not. There's no discipline. They get to look at a wall, oh, what did we learn? Oh, we get a free day out of class. Just kicking out and going to magistrate, shit is bullshit. Straight up bullshit. You're, you're ruining kids' damn. Well, we can bring them in together and figure out the problem. Have you guys ever heard of, um, what you guys should have? In your, because I contacted a child advocate and a legal child advocate, actually, that you would hire out of your own pocket, and they asked me, you know what the MTSS coordinator is? Anybody? No? You do. Good, at least one does, okay. Do we have one? We do have an MTSS coordinator.
We have someone who carries that dysfunction.
Oh, we do, because that's not just one person's job, that's actually a group of people. I didn't know if you knew that, but that's a group of people. So do they carry out the, what is it, the PDIS ones? Uh-huh, one person does.
No, it's a team, but that's a conversation to have somewhere not here.
Why? I just wanna know why we don't have this. I, and that's what I'm talking, I wanna know, do we have these kind of coordinators here? You're not gonna shut me up, because I'm not gonna shut up. What I'm saying is, do we also have a conflict resolution programmer here? Do you know what that is? You bring in the parents, you sit down, I ain't never had that option. Now where's the forms at that these kids can fill out? If they're uncomfortable, because it ain't in the classroom. From what I understand, y'all already been presented with the forms. So if I come to this next meeting, continue, are you guys gonna give me an answer on your bully policy and how we're gonna make it better, how these kids can be safe? Why does the victim always gotta get in trouble? Am I gonna get answers, or am I just gonna get looked at like another stupid parent around here? Because the parents are upset. And I, whether they wanna get time to come up here, I know some of them have kids' sports, but I'll be here. Because my kid is not a punching bag. You understand? I'm not putting up with it. I don't wanna go the next step. So can we take care of this and start making it safe for our school? Can we? Because this is becoming scary. And y'all should be ashamed of yourselves. That's the important thing around here, safety, yes, sir. Sixth grade. I also have a problem in the high school too, but that is tenth grade. Hopefully, Mr. Bonus will be working with me on Monday with that. But as far as your middle school, it's, it's becoming a joke. Your high school is too. But y'all look like jokes, y'all have kids going to cyber school because they can't stop the bullying and you guys won't help them.
This is why we'll have to move on, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm so sorry about that, but I, I would like answers next time, as to how we're gonna help, make sure my kid's not a punching bag in school no more. Okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President, Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township.
I'm Chrissy Florian, East Finley Township. Alright, well, I'm not gonna be any more nice than her, so. Anyways, um, it has been brought to my attention that board members are texting each other during the meetings, belittling and talking about community members amongst themselves, not giving others respect while they speak and being unprofessional. My advice is, get out of here, just get out. You are not here for the children, I don't even know what you're here for, but you need to go. If you do not like what I said last month about your decisions you make and how I feel about what you've done, you're lucky it's just me coming up here. I wrote this the day after the meeting. Anyways, um, you're lucky it was just me coming up here and speaking of my disgust on decisions made to take prayer away without any collaboration between the board. I think what I've said is nicer than what others have wanted to say. You ran to be here, you put yourself out there, and it's my right to question your decisions if I feel it needs to be. To publicly single out any committee or com- community member is your right. Doesn't make it right on your criticism either. Unfortunately, someone's not here to hear that. Um, one of my concerns, which we will go again on, is food in this building and products that are served. I wanna start with making it clear that this is not and has not ever been an attack on the people that work here, that are just doing their jobs in the cafeteria. I do encourage you to stand with me to get unhealthy, toxic food out of the hands and mouths of these children and to care a lot more. Cafeteria workers, I respect and appreciate everything you do. I've heard wonderful things over the years about some of the lunch ladies and about Mr. Demian, how he encourages the children to eat their fruits and vegetables and even rewards the students. Thank you to all of. Thank you to all of you. But I wanna get back on how horrible some of the products we're talking about are. Doritos and endocrine disruptor. We were talking about the taco bar that you guys had last month. Doritos are horrible with the red food, or the food dies in them, they're an endocrine disruptor, as I just said. We are serving them to these children. I do not think that it is a good idea, obviously, and I hope that you all, you all start to reconsider the food that is served here. It needs change. There should not be pop machines in the building. We should not encourage these children to drink pop, and I don't, and I hope that in the future, they are gone. Removed and better, healthy options are available. Children don't need to be fixed, the system does. I look forward to the things changing in the near future. You spend so much money on so many different things here, when is the health of these children going to be a priority? Thank you.
This vice president, Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township.
Thank you. So I'm just gonna be real quick on my first thought. Vicki Jordan, Buffalo Township. I have, are you okay? No, I just wanna make sure you're okay. Um, I have complete faith in Mrs. Horver Talk, and that she is going to dig through this budget thoroughly. I will say, I don't understand all the ins and outs of capital funds and whatever. Um, but it's hard to sit here and listen to a fifty thousand dollar proposal for a weight room, um, when we're talking about eliminating teachers and increasing class sizes with our youngest students. So just, please, do your best to eliminate what you can. I'm hoping this is the last time I ever have to do this. I wanna start off by making a statement, and then I wanna clear a few things up from last month's meeting. The only time I ever wanna have to go back to last month's meeting. I've dedicated myself to these meetings for over five years, longer than some of you have been on the board. My intention is not to be disrespectful, but to try and share a different perspective other than your own, hoping you have an open mind to receive it and maybe give you a different viewpoint that you may have not thought of. Those things can't be heard if you are not listening. I openly admit, my delivery isn't always the best, but I'm boiled over with frustration when I see some of the members of our board put their own wants in front of what is best interest of the district as a whole. It's clear some of you will vote for, for or against something just to spite another board member, because you dislike them. It's sad to witness and highly disappointing. I stood before you all and stated it was your vote and your right to put forward who you wanted. Then at the end of the meeting, I was accused of being a hypocrite and un-Christian for calling some of you disgusting following your vote. If Mr. Kern would actually pay attention to who is saying what, instead of the whispers back and forth and the notes being passed, then maybe he'd know by who thing, by whom things were said. If he did actually listen, he'd know, I never said that. I did not call any of you out on who you nominated or how you voted. What I did call you out for was your blatant disrespect for community members and your fellow board members who spoke, and I stand behind that. Your comments at the end of the meeting, Mr. Kern, proved my point, you don't listen. Yes, I found it disheartening that any of you would support a candidate who publicly supports trans girls, also known as boys, and girl's sports and spaces. But that was the decision Ms. Robarnik and Mr. Leisure and Mr. Vanada will have to justify when they ask their constituents to vote for them again. It's not something you can hide from or sweep under the rug, as the majority of this country disagrees with that mentality. I'd also like to state that Chrissy Florian became emotional over it. She has five young girls. She had every right to express her disgust, and that any of you would support that type of ideology which directly affects her daughters. Some of you know I've sat on a board in an executive position for eight years. I've had to sit through my share of uncomfortable meetings, as decisions made were not always popular. With that said, I've never responded or reprimanded anyone for their thoughts, whether I agreed or disagreed. Your job is to sit there and listen, not reprimand the public because your feelings are hurt. I was gonna go on and say about the nasty things Mr. Vanada said to me after the meeting. He called me an idiot. He said text messages that are distracting him at the board were based on texts from other people who wanted to share that I'm an idiot. I think, uh, it's pretty sad that community members who have dedicated themselves to this district and come to these meetings have to be treated like that. Uh, if he thought he could intimidate me with ugly words, then he clearly underestimates my resilience in the face of hateful and unkind rhetoric. I will not be silenced.
We were the required six years, and you're sitting here calling a city, looking at his thumb, not paying attention to him.
This vice president, Kelly Ziegler.
I'm sorry, what township? Hello, uh, my name is Kelly Ziegler from Buffalo Township. Um, I recently sent an email to all of you, but I'm not great with technology, so just in case it didn't get there, um, I just, I wanted to highlight some things. I did shorten it a little, so I don't wanna bore you if you've already heard this once, um, but it's important to me, um, and I just think that it's important that I make sure that you've all heard this. So first of all, I would like to thank you, for starters, for allowing Dr. or Mr. Cybek to adjust the special services department for this school year. The changes made have given our McGuffey students tremendous opportunities. Mrs. Horgan has given the gifted students numerous collaborations and events to promote extension and advanced learning. The autistic classroom, emotional support class, and life skills students have also been given additional learning opportunities and trips. Giving teachers the resources that are needed for a successful classroom has in turn given students what they need to be successful in their development. This leads me to my current concern with the district. I listened to the last school board meeting and how the budget is definitely a concern. Um, ideas were thrown out on how to help the budget, and one suggestion was to be more creative, efficient, and effective with our current staff. This comment hit me very close to home, cause last year the special, special services was handled in an inefficient method, and it was far from effective. The creative plan to divide the special service students between four various staff members may have been efficient and effective for a budget, but it was left students without a teacher who could effectively provide success and progress. And I totally get that that was brainstorming at the last meeting, and I, I get that, but I wanna make sure that I state my concern with that plan. I recently saw a posting for a grade five position at Joe Walker, and I was excited to see this posting to help the students and teachers have a more appropriate class size there. Following this, I heard that the solution to the problem takes a first grade teacher away from Claysville Elementary School. This would take the five first grade classes and divide the students among four classrooms. This is certainly not a solution, this is simply replacing one problem for another. Having five classrooms of kindergarten and first grade has been an essential part of the growth of these students at both elementary schools. These children fall under the early childhood umbrella, which recommends a class size of fifteen students. Currently, we're right there with fifteen to seventeen students in each. This ratio allows children in these younger years of school to build a strong foundation, and with adequate student-to-teacher time, these children receive the essential tools for learning, and then they're prepared for the larger class sizes as their journey continues. Taking away a teacher from first grade will add to class size and take away from the time the teacher can spend with each student to build the basic educational skills they need for their future success. Claysville Elementary School is the largest school in the McGuffey School District. The largest school also means the largest need for substitutes, the greatest number of students are rolling throughout the year, and the greatest need for coverage. This should all be discussed when considering taking away a teacher from a school building that is already in need. I have three children in McGuffey School District who need teachers who are consistent, present, and dedicated, and when teachers must cover other classrooms, they're losing their prep needed for their own students. And when there's no substitute, various staff have to fill in. There's no consistency for the children, and it results in a day of school that is at least disruptive, or at worst, a day of education is lost. Reassigning and reducing teachers to mean a budget is being done at the expense of the best education. As sheriff from the board tonight and some community members, we have amazing staff. I am so grateful for the McGuffey teachers and educators who are sticking it out when things are tough, and I thank these teachers for always fighting for the needs of the children. I urge you as a board to talk with and listen to these educators, they have experience and they're on the front lines, they have all of the knowledge, they can help us figure out how to do this right. I recognize that I don't know this budget, and I'm not aware of all the ins and outs, but I will end with one question. What budget issues are more important than the staff needed to educate our students? Thank you.
This vice president, that's all. Thank you. Okay, on to items for discussion. Anybody have anything to this evening?
I do, I have a, just for clarification, um, from this solicitor, earlier there was a comment made that, um, from Mrs. Frye, that she did not, um, ask to have the, this week's, um, Washington Area Career and Technology Report added to the agenda for sunshine purp- uh, purposes. It, we, we could have added that within the twenty-four hours and not violated sunshine, correct?
Correct, you weren't taking action on it, it was informational only, you can add information at any time. So it's because it's, the point of Act sixty-five is that the public has notice of things you are taking official action on. So you could have added it if it would have been useful.
For me, it's the principle of not changing the agenda, and that's why I, I adjust it that way.
But I just wanted to be clear that there are, there are parts of the agenda that you can change, that's permissible, that's not a transparency, that's not a violation of, of the law. The law is very specific about.
Right, right. I didn't say it was break the law, it was just with respect to the sunshine law.
Just to be clear, thank you.
Any else?
I would like to motion to, um, have an executive session directly after the meeting tonight, regular meeting.
We would just need to know what, what topic, so.
Personnel.
Yep. Need a motion? And a second.
By motion, right?
You made the motion, you need a second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I'm gonna ask, is it permissible for the board to, we're not gonna take any official action after, correct? You're not gonna want any official action taken after? So can we adjourn, can we adjourn the meeting to, to an executive session? And we will not return? So then you would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Okay, so I will make the motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Wait, did we vote, did we vote on the motion?
For the executive.
For the executive session?
We did, and it passed. It was unanimous. I didn't hear any no's.
I didn't hear it, but.
I, I mean, I heard it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I thought I heard it.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Yes, happy Easter, everyone.
Okay, can you adjourn? Yes. Good?
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're outta here. Slam it.